I call this meeting to order. This is a regular meeting of the Northfield Public School Board. Today is Monday, November 9th, 2015, and the time is 7:00 PM. Dr. Richardson, there's a number of items in the table file?
Sure. If you'll take a look in your table file, you'll see that there are information in terms of school improvement plan presentations, both from Sibley and the middle school. Sibley's includes some additions or corrected slides three and four for the PowerPoint presentation, and the middle school's PowerPoint presentation is also included in the table file. We also have a number of personnel items, including appointments, increased, decreased, change in assignments, leaves of absence, and resignations. And I would ask that those be inserted in the appropriate places in the agenda.
Okay. Thank you very much. If there's no objection, we'll add these items to the agenda as we move forward. We now have an opportunity for public comment. This is a chance for members of the district to address the board. Is there anyone here who wishes to address the board? Okay, we will move on then to approval of the minutes. Board members, you have in your package minutes for the regular school board meeting held on October 26th. Is there a motion to approve the minutes?
Moved.
Moved by Ellen. Is there a second? Second by Margaret. Any question or discussion? Okay. All those in favor of approving the minutes for the regular school board meeting held on Monday, October 26th, 2015, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, we will move on to announcements and recognitions. Dr. Richardson?
I have a couple this evening, and when we get to the last one, I'll ask Matt to help us because we have a little video clip from Senator Franken, and I wanted to share that with you. So first of all, on the 27th of October, the Rice County Community Transition Interagency Committee held a transition forum for parents and students. It was a big success with approximately 25 parents, many staff and agency partners in attendance. Transition services for students with special needs prepare students for education, work, and life after high school. The forum began with a group of five Northfield High School students explaining the work they are doing in their schools that relate and help them to transition into the adult world. Students spoke about their classes at the Rock House where skills like cooking, cleaning, money skills are taught, as well as participating in volunteer opportunities around the community. The forum included a panel of 11 interagency partners, including Northfield High School staff, vocational rehab, rehabilitation, Rice County Social Services, disability services representatives from South Central Community College, and others that support students and families in transitioning into adult life. One of our former high school students, who's now attending Augsburg College, shared his experience of transition to college life as a student with disabilities. As it was shared, was to start planning early, include students in the process, build self-advocacy skills, and keep expectations high for all students. Second piece I'd like to announce, and as part of the work from the Move-A-Thon at Greenville Park, Greenville Park was able to raise $20,000, which is about three times more than they've ever done before. As part of that, however, there was a requirement for the principal, if they raised that kind of money, to sleep out on the roof of Greenville Park. Well, tonight is the night. And so if after the board meeting, you'd like to go over and serenade Dave, or honk as you drive by, or whatever, he's currently on the roof of Greenville Park, and I think we'll be serenaded at least earlier on in the evening, but at least it's not 20 below zero, so life is good. But again, congratulations to Greenville Park. They did, I think, an excellent job of really putting together a strategy that really brought their community and staff together. And so again, congratulations to them, and hopefully Dave stays warm. Okay, the last piece, we'd like to share with you a short recorded message from Senator Al Franken, which was on the 50th anniversary celebration of Vista, which was held at the University of Minnesota. And this clip talks about a program in our district.
Hi, I'm Al Franken. I'm sorry I couldn't join you today. To commemorate the 50th anniversary of the Vista program, whether it's helping students graduate from high school, cleaning up the environment, or working to rebuild homes, you are learning about the world around you while at the same time helping your communities. The work you do makes me proud. You know, a few years ago, I visited Northfield's Torch Program. Torch is tackling obstacles and raising college hopes. The AmeriCorps members in the Torch Program work directly with students in connecting them with after-school programs, and mentors, and community service opportunities. Since Torch began in 2005, the graduation rate for Northfield's Latino students has climbed from 36% to over 90%. And that's just one example of the great work service members are doing in our state. Minnesota is a national leader in volunteering, and the fact that there are 165 AmeriCorps Vistas serving in 133 sites all over our state certainly proves that. And I'm doing everything I can to help programs like Vista grow. Every year, I urge Senate appropriators to fully fund the AmeriCorps program, and I will continue to be a strong advocate for these programs in Washington. Thank you to your CEO, Wendy Spencer, and a special thanks to each of you for giving to your communities. Keep up the great work.
Not bad. Not bad at all.
Wonderful to get national exposure to a great program. Is there any other, anything else anyone would like to add, announcements or recognitions? Okay. So with that, we will move on to items for discussion and report. Up again, for any board members' questions or comments are Mary Grace Hanson, Director of Teaching and Learning, and Hope Langston, District Assessment Coordinator.
So you've had a chance now to listen to the presentation, and again, this is kind of the second go-round because we did also present this as Mary and Hope explained to the D-PAC committee a couple of weeks ago, so that they also have the same information and give us feedback about the program. I think what we'd like to reinforce as we look at this process is that this is an evolving process. Again, as Mary suggested to you, a year ago, we were pretty much told, create whatever kind of reports you want, share the information that makes sense to you, and we'll be fine. You know, we'll figure out how it works. Within a year, they have now said, there are five goals, you need to report specifically on these five goals, and not only that, but here's the assessment data that you're going to use to make that report. Obviously, as we've gone through and worked with this process, we've got some concerns, which is why our World's Best Workforce Report is much more robust in terms of the data that's on the website. But what we were also told last year is when we shared the information with the department, we received a letter back indicating that although we had a number of links on our document where people could go to look at individual site improvement plans, to look at progress reports, to look at evidence of practice from PLCs, et cetera, we were told by the department, we really didn't bother to do that. We didn't look at anything else, other than the summary document that you sent to us. So our efforts at this point are, we're good rule followers, or at least Mary's a good rule follower. And so we basically created a report that very much reflects exactly what the department is asking us to do. But we also think it's very important, and we want to reinforce the fact that what you're going to hear a little bit later this evening from our school improvement plans, is the real focus of where we think we're making impact on kids' performance. And that is, in the school improvement plans, in the individual PLC implementations, that's where SMART goals are really developed, that focus on specific students in specific buildings with specific needs. And so the important thing, I think, is that we don't discount the great work that is happening at our individual buildings and our individual PLCs, because that's where the difference really gets made. However, at the same time, we know that the Department of Education is saying, we've got to create a report that basically gives the broad picture from that perspective. We also know in doing this report, that if you think about it, the reason that people struggled so much about the first goal, remember the first goal? First goal is, "Call Children."
Ready for K.
Ready for K. The measurement of that goal is more difficult because, guess what? K through 12 does not provide pre-K programming. We do offer pre-K programming through our community services, but it only reaches a certain segment of our student population. So the state, even as it began to put this piece together, created one goal for which we have very little control unless we happen to have those students involved with us. But we're focusing on how can we help that happen? And with, I think, Northfield Promise and others, we're going to be much ahead of the curve from other districts. As we look at some of the other goals, I think what you're seeing is goals that are really focused on programmatic pieces. We've already been very tuned in on third grade literacy. We've already been very tuned in on thinking about reducing the achievement gap. And we, as you know, have done, I think, some fantastic things in terms of both graduation rate and really helping to make kids' career in college ready. At the same time, the reality of the numbers that they've shared with you, they have done the math. Because as Hope indicated to you, our goal is that we have to reduce the gap, or reduce the lack of proficiency in certain groups, by 50% by the end of 2017. That also means by 2020, we have to do what? We have to have 100% of all of our students proficient at grade level. And if you remember, for the last 12 years, I've been telling you, is that possible? Is it possible to have every student who is an English language learner proficient at grade level if they haven't been in the system and learning English for at least seven years? None of the research would say that's possible. Is it possible to have every special education student, regardless of the level of disability that they have, be proficient at grade level in reading and mathematics? No, it's not. So we still have, I think, a point where we're going to hit a wall. And I just need to have people be really clear about that, that we're going to do our darndest to make sure that every child is as successful as we can make them, and give them all the opportunities to get that done. But there is some reality to the fact that an expectation of 100% wasn't feasible 12 years ago. It's not one bit more feasible today. We're going to do all the things we can to get us as far as we can go, and we're going to be continuing to really focus on really high expectations for every group of our students that we work with. So you've had a chance to listen to Mary and to Hope about World's Best Workforce, about the goals. Are there any questions that you guys have about this? Because the other thing that has to happen tonight is when we get to the supernet's report items for individual action, we're going to be asking you to approve the report so that the final pieces can be put together and it can be submitted to the Department by December 1st of this year.
Okay. Board members, are there any questions or comments? Ellen?
So first, thank you for such a thorough report. My one question is really, I wanted clarification, because I think you made this clarification at D-PAC, and it was really helpful. And I think it's just for the kindergarten readiness goal, that you count the, what is it, the white, the some risk and the low risk together to meet the goal, but that's not true, and the other ones you're looking at exceed and meets, is that in terms of being able to look at what our percentages are and which numbers we should pay attention to?
Yeah, what the FAST assessment recommends is the students that are falling in the green, some risk. They anticipate that the needs of those students can be met in the classroom with typical classroom differentiation. And the kids that are in the white, or the high risk, are the ones who would go into the intervention pool. Thank you.
Okay, that's good clarification. Thank you. Any other questions or comments from board members? No? Okay. Well, I'd like to echo what Ellen said. Thank you very much for, I know this is quite an onerous effort to put this together, and I really appreciate that, you know, you guys recognize these overarching goals as very important, and you took them seriously, and, you know, it's all to benefit, you know, on behalf of the students. So thanks for the work. It was really well done. We'll look forward to seeing you next year.
Thank you.
Okay. With that, we can move on then to, we have two site improvement plan presentations this evening. Sibley is up first. So we welcome Sibley Elementary School. And just a reminder, board members, there was some additional information in your table file as part of the PowerPoint presentation this evening.
All right. Good evening.
Good evening.
Thank you for allowing us to present. I'm going to be here to start off our Sibley Site Improvement Plan. Join me in tonight's presentation, our instructional coaches, Tanya Will and Becky Gani, and they're going to join me in just a brief minute here. I'll be covering the information of the actual site improvement plan, and after that, Tanya and Becky will share some of what PLCs are currently up to and what we're looking at from the staff development perspective moving forward. Just to preface our presentation here, we used to come up and basically regurgitate what was on the school improvement plan, and we've changed that up a bit. I'm going to share some information with you, but we're going to focus more on what's going on in the school and how things are going from that perspective. While MCA's aren't tied to our school improvement plan, here's a brief look at how each of our grade levels did last year. The one thing to remember about MCA's, and the reason we went away from MCA's, is that in 2011, the math MCA changed, in 2013, the reading MCA changed, and we just weren't getting consistency to compare from year to year. So we went to, our SMART goals are now designed around the Northwest Evaluation Association's Math Test, which is our measure of academic progress. Let's take a look at our SMART goals here. And while we had reading, math, and climate SMART goals this year, all three of these goals were in their first year of a three-year goal cycle. So keep in mind, these are umbrella goals for our school. And the PLC goals that we have in each of our PLCs are much more specific. Last year, as a reference, we reported how the rules of the game are changing a bit. We're going to adjust our goals from spring to spring testing, to fall to fall testing. I also reported that we met with Hope Langston last year, and she helped us realize that a realistic goal to the math scores is something that is around the 50% range. And we were originally looking at goals in the 60% to 65% range, but both Hope and our former DAC, Roger Jenny, suggested setting the goal at 50% for the first couple of years, and then adjusting if need be. And something I also shared with you last year, that I'll just refresh your memory on, is according to Hope, 50% is about what NWA would expect now that they're setting median growth targets for grade levels. The way Hope explained it made sense. She said that we have to look at, we have to look at like a bell-shaped curve, and typically half your class will fall on the right side of the curve, and half your class will fall on the left side of the curve. Scores over the next couple of years will be reviewed and help us establish that baseline information that we need for future years. Because we're now measuring from fall to fall, the second grade score you see is the current second, is, the second grade score you see is our current second graders, who had the majority of their instruction in first grade. So they participated in all of the first grade curriculum, then they went through the, what we like to call, with a wink, the long summer of forgetting. And then we had, then we had three weeks of instruction, and then we took our math test. So those students are recorded as our second grade students. And there was a little confusion around that. That's why there are some changes in what you have in your report, in the school improvement plan, and what you're going to see in this report. But I will update the school improvement plan and get that to Dr. Richardson with these updated numbers. Let's see. All right. This is our reading SMART goal. By the fall of 2015, 50% of our Sibley's second through fifth graders will meet or exceed their individualized growth target on the NWEA map reading test from the fall to fall. And again, 50%, we're looking at 43% in second grade, 62% in third, 61% in fourth, and 51% in fifth. Also, keep in mind that all of these students are with us this year. So those fifth graders, again, were the students that had that fourth grade instruction last year, and so on. And again, that's the percentage of students who met their individualized growth target, and that growth target comes from NWEA. That's something that is generated based on how the students test. Our math SMART goal is written exactly the same, it's just for math, and 48% of our second graders, 62% of our third, 42% of our fourth, and 58% of our fifth graders actually met their growth targets. And again, as I mentioned, we will analyze these as the years progress and take a look at what we should use as our baseline. Another goal we had had to do with our English language learners, and the population of English learners at Sibley has grown over the last five years. With that in mind, we've been analyzing EL data and feel as though we need to take a closer look at our practice in order to more specifically meet EL needs. Therefore, we're tying EL goals to the Z-score, which comes from the state, and Z-scores measure students against other students who start off with the same MCA score. So in the end, you want your Z-score to be above zero. And again, you look at this here, we just had Z-scores on students in grade four and five, and again, this is generated from the MCA. Our students in grade four were above zero in the Z-score, and our students in grade five were below the zero in Z-score. The English learner's Z-score is, again, measured by the MCA. The other thing to note here is that the cell size is really too small for statistical relevance, or we had, I think, seven students in one group and four in another, and that just ebbs and flows based on, based, you know, on student population from year to year. About 11% of our students at Sibley are Latino students. And last year, when, in looking at this, we had, we had some conversations at our RTI meetings about students who are in our EL program, how many times are they actually pulled out of class, or do they leave class to receive instruction? How much, you know, transition time do they have? So I asked both Tanya and Becky to actually follow a student, and they followed a different student for an entire day. And, you know, the report back was, yes, there was a lot of transition, but in the same sense, it was nice to see the good instruction that was going on. You know, we have students that actually fall in the category of, you know, having instruction in their general classroom. They might have instruction in speech, they might have instruction in our resource room, and they might get some help in our EL classroom. So there are a lot of transitions that can take place over the course of the day for some of our students. As we move forward, we entered our climate goal, and in completing the spring survey, which is a survey we send out to our parent population every year, 95% of our parents surveyed will agree or strongly agree that students show respect for other students, teachers show respect for students, and they feel welcome at Sibley. And we were, we were really close to meeting that goal. 90% believe students show respect for other students, 95% believe teachers show respect for students, and 94% of our families feel welcome when they come to school. And that is the percentage of students who agree or strongly agree on that survey. As we move into goals for this year, as I mentioned, we are going to keep the same goals in place, so this is just going to be a review of the goals we just went over. Our SMART goal for reading is the same. Our SMART goal for math is the same, as well as the SMART goal for our students who are EL students, we're looking at that Z-score again. And then, again, moving forward, we've had some discussion about just totally revamping our climate goal. That's something we're going to look at between now and next year. There are things that go on behind the scenes that you see in our, in our school improvement plan. One thing we have coming up that's pretty exciting is Noreen Cooney saw an opportunity early in the summer, and jumped on it, and we actually have the Minnesota Vikings who will be coming down on Friday and providing an anti-bullying assembly for our students in third, fourth, and fifth grade. And that's just one thing that goes on, you know, that our students thoroughly love, and it's something that they look forward to, you know, moving forward. We did do kindness retreats. We've had some discussion with the middle school and the high school about kindness retreats, and how we were doing the same thing from elementary school, to middle school, to high school. So that's something that we're putting on the back burner for right now, as we move forward. I'm now going to turn the presentation over to Tanya and Becky, and they're going to take a look at what's going on at Sibley right now, and some of the staff development opportunities that we have.
Hello?
Becky?
We get to do the fun parts. We want to take a few minutes to share some of the highlights of the great teaching and learning that takes place at Sibley every day. We decided to focus on the three parts of our mission statement as a way to organize our presentation. Our mission statement is, "Building Foundations, Empowering the Learner, and Celebrating the Journey." This statement is a result of some great collaboration about 10 years ago with the entire staff. We will start with the building foundation. Our foundation always starts with our strong core instruction. Our teachers are constantly refining their core instruction to ensure that each student's needs are met and students find success. Our PLC teams analyze data to make instructional decisions to optimize learning. We try to stay current of best practices that provide clear instruction, provide regular feedback to students, and encourage active engagement. Differentiation occurs at all levels and in all subject areas. Elementary teachers have become masterful at meeting students' needs in both academics and in the social behavioral areas. On top of the strong core instruction, for the past few years, we've really been honing our flexible grouping. Flex groups are created based on the fall data that we collect. For reading, students may be grouped according to information gathered about text levels, DIBL's fluency scores, map scores. We look at all the data side by side and decide how to group kids to best meet their needs. Math groups may be formed based on unit pre-tests and/or map data. Common formative assessments are becoming a practice teachers use to dig deeper on specific skills to inform their instruction in flex groups. We try to find out what they know and plan from there. It is an area where we continue to grow. On top of flex groups, we have lots of interventions this year that I'm excited to talk to you about. We have had Reading Core for the past three years, and this is our fourth year with Minnesota Reading Core. We actually have 2.5 members, all men, at Sibley this year, and that is in addition to the 1.0 we had last year. We also have a full-time math core member, and the addition of ADSS has helped us really dig deeper to reach lots of struggling students. Accelerate Northfield continues to be a great resource for us. We train a lot of volunteers to do interventions for students who don't fit in some of these other areas. And then the top one we see is extensions. We really are working with teachers to address the fourth question of the PLC, what do we do if the student already knows what we intended to teach? And Tanya and I are kind of taking that on this year to really help on the other end to extend the learning. We have a six-minute video clip of what's going on with our support staff in their PLCs. Last year, we shared videos of our classroom teachers' PLCs. This is about six minutes, and what you'll see on here are a few people talking, our specialists, our special ed folks, and our EL instructors. I'm going to let you press the button.
Got to click in the right spot here.
Yep.
That's okay. That's why we have the video on backup.
Hi, my name is Courtney Chorin, and we are the Sibley Special Education Resource for PLC. This year, we are taking a focus on technology, particularly for our fourth and fifth grade students, who now have one-on-one I-CAS. We're looking at how we can increase some of their deficit areas for their intellectual testing data. We're looking to increase their independence in the classroom, even various different technology differences. And we're looking to improve our own instruction with some new technology, all based around the I-CAS.
My name is Erica Nutt, and I'm from Sibley Elementary. This is our visual arts PLC.
This is Donna Neale, Greenville Park.
And I'm Kate Westrop.
This year in our PLC, we are looking at rolling out new national standards that are hopefully going to be adopted by the state of Minnesota next year. that are hopefully going to be adopted by the state of Minnesota next year. We're also looking at continuing our perception process that we've been using for the last few years.
Hi, I am Holly Fisher, and this is Sibley Music Room, and this is my ELC.
I'm Angela Lyson, and I work at Green Hill Park as a music teacher.
And I'm Kristin Dahl, and I'm in Bridgewater.
These two ladies have been lucky enough to get guitars for their music rooms this year.
I'm Peter Gray of Northfield, Fiders Listers, and that's Kate for the sax guitar, so we're excited. And we're excited to have guitars here.
Bridgewater was able to get money from the PTO from a fundraiser last spring. So we are going to revise the original guitar curriculum and make it cross-district guitar curriculum this year.
I'm Heidi Dennis, and I'm part of the reading PLC at Sibley, along with my colleagues from Minnesota Reading Core. And we have been working on our PLC goal. And our students are, or our goal is a little different than some PLCs because our students are continually changing, some sort of evolving. So we are looking at a goal that is a meaningful measure of reading growth. And this year, I'm so excited. We have increased resources through some reading corps. And we're able to dig deeper and serve so many more students than we were able to in that. And it's really exciting. And the other thing that I have loved about our PLC is that we are collaborating on the apparatuses. We are all sort of, I would say, apparatuses. We do it together.
I'm Anne Hammond, I'm a media specialist at Sibley. During PLC time, I have the opportunity to meet with the other elementary media specialists. In the media class, we talk about core main topics. The first one is media center organization. The second one is literature appreciation. Number three is research. And number four is technology. Our media PLC has decided to focus on technology this year.
So far this year, our PLC has spent time on creating common assessments for third grade in technology. We've also expanded to fourth grade and plan to continue onto fifth grade. We've talked about common units, and we also share new technologies and things that each of us are an expert in. I look forward to our media PLC every week. This is the only opportunity we have to get together and collaborate on our common assessments, our common units, and our essential learning.
We are the Sibley and Bridgewater English Learning PLC. I'm Brenda Ham, English Learning Instructor at Bridgewater.
I'm Anna Schaller, English Learning Instructor at Sibley. And I live in downtown, English learning teacher at Sibley.
We have made and developed a new community of I-do, we-do, you-do model as well. We use this conversation with academics to counter impact students across all grade levels and academic.
To attain our goal, we've developed thematic students with lessons that incorporate general and academic vocabulary from grade level benchmarks in the content areas of science and social studies, aligned with the lead at English Studies position to save.
When we first started, we had a goal that focused only on mastery. Now, we have a goal that focuses on both mastery and growth. For newcomers, it is important to focus on growth. And for more advanced English learners, a focus on mastery of extended vocabulary is more appropriate. We are all very thankful for the opportunity to collaborate as an elementary team.
Hi, I'm Ryan Peach. I'm part of the elementary PLC team. Last year, as part of our PLC goal, we came up with fitness standards for grades three through five. And we use those to assess students in grades three through five and to give them a grade. And we're going to continue to do that this year. This year, also as part of our PLC goal, we are going to test on certain skills. And the first skill we're going to focus on is opposition, use of opposition when it comes to throwing and kicking. And we're going to start by just assessing the fifth graders by using checklist rubers. And our goal is to have ninety percent of fifth grade students using opposition on a regular basis. That's what we're going to focus on this year, and we're looking forward to it.
Hi, I'm Tanya Will, and I'm going to take the next part of this presentation. But as you can see from the video, the PLC certainly functions as a consistent structure that collaboratively examines and builds on the foundational teaching and learning that occurs in our classrooms. I want to thank the teachers for putting together those video clips and getting them together so we can see those tonight. I think it's kind of important to hear what's really happening at that PLC level as well. As we move on to the next piece of our mission, empowering the learner, this highlights the importance of the connections between teachers and students, sort of the interplay between teaching and learning, and basically the continuous growth among all. We're going to look at empowering the learner from three lenses. The first will be from the responsive classroom lens. Responsive classroom has been just a real core piece of what we do. The teachers at Sibley have all been trained. We know that we have a common goal of building a community of learners that are empowered to make some decisions and build this community together. One of the fourth guiding principles of responsive classroom talks about having a specific set of social skills that children would need to learn in practice in order to be successful in both their academic and social connectedness. And these social skills can be remembered by the acronym CARES. And so that stands for Cooperation, Assertion, Responsibility, Empathy, and Self-Control. So those are some of the skills that we take a look at. Everyone starts off the day with a morning meeting. It sort of sets the stage for the day. We have a greeting, sharing, morning message, and then an activity. And the activity is often an interactive game that encourages some of these skills or some academic skills, or builds on bigger ideas like collaboration, trust, or inquiry. We're excited that we have a committee of teachers that are a responsive classroom committee that spearheads different efforts that we have going on at Sibley and presents ideas to our staff on a regular basis. This year, we're going to have the addition of school-wide meetings, three of them this year, with the first one happening on November twenty-third. The second lens we want to look through is through the lens of instruction, or high-quality instruction. As we look at the interplay between teaching and learning, we know that high-quality instruction is multifaceted, and it really needs to meet the students where they're at. We do this through some instructional strategies, like the optimal learning model, where we're looking at teacher modeling, moving towards guided practice, and then to independent practice. It's a nice progression that leads to student empowerment. Sometimes we talk about this as the I-do, we-do, you-do model as well. Teachers also regularly use guided reading groups and guided math groups in order to differentiate their instruction and be able to sort of increase the feedback cycle a little bit for those students. Whether we're reteaching something or extending something, it's in a smaller setting, it's easier to have that interaction. We talk a bit about really targeting our instruction to just above where the students are. Sometimes we say the zone of proximal development, or making them stretch just a bit. We make sure that we're communicating and posting our learning targets so that students know where they're going and that they can reflect on their journey through this learning. Student reflection is really important. Sometimes this looks like in the form of a learning progression, so they know where they've been, where they are, and where they're going. Or learning ladders, or even I-can statements, so they understand what they can do right now in the moment. The PLC is really an important time for our teachers to be able to reflect on student results in this area. It may be in the form of common formative assessments. And then also how the instructional choices that they've made, how those are matching student needs. And it's a great place for teachers to collaborate and examine how this is going. And the third lens that we want to look through for empowering the learner has to do with staff development. We know that empowering the learner is not only a continuous process for students, but also for our staff. And through professional development, our teachers are supported and empowered to grow as educators. Instructional coaching has opened new avenues for conversation, growth, and teacher empowerment. Sometimes the teacher talks with the coach in order to gain clarity under their own thinking. Sometimes the coach provides an extra pair of eyes, or ears, or hands to assist in creating a learning environment that matches student needs. And sometimes the coach listens and can maybe steer or suggest resources that may inform or empower that teacher to take the next step. In this picture, you'll, you might notice a few rocks in here as well. As a Sibley staff, we've identified five areas that are listed on our slides as our current biggest areas of focus. We call them our big rocks. Growth mindset, differentiation, behavior, engagement, motivation, and the joy of teaching and learning. And our staff identified those at the end of last year. And moving into this year, we're really realizing what a job it is to balance and prioritize all that's out there. And we know that these are some goals of our whole staff. And then we know each classroom has some things that are entering in there. So we literally asked the teachers to balance and prioritize using rocks sort of symbolically. And the teachers enjoyed having these conversations about what's the biggest and what needs to be at the bottom. And it was kind of an interesting exploration of their teaching. Now, one of the true joys of teaching is to witness authentic learning, motivated learners, continuous growth, and moments of discovery. And we thought we would bring some moments of engaged learning to you this evening, since we couldn't bring all the kids here. We'll just let the faces of the students say it all.
It is evident that these learners feel empowered. Whenever I see pictures like this, it reminds me of why I went into teaching, I guess. We also want to note the culmination of learning, the celebrating the journey. We have two large school-wide celebrations that we'll continue with, Beyond Words and Celebrate Math Week. Beyond Words, we're adding kind of a new twist. We haven't quite decided what we're going to call it. But I'm going to actually let Tanya come in with a little bit of math into Beyond Words. And we're going to expand our celebration from art and literacy to art, literacy, and math. And so there's some really fun art, math projects that we're cooking up. So we're not sure, maybe Beyond Words 2.0 or something like that. So we're excited about some new changes in that area. Celebrate Math Week is always the last week of January. Tanya has that up, and she has a team. I think they met today. They pulled together kind of a fantastic week for some math excitement. We also have lots of celebrations throughout the year in classrooms. It's just a fun way of thinking about it. I Love to Read Month, One Hundredth Day, Tie-Dye Day, field trips, school-wide celebrations, holiday sings, Field Day, Hundred Mile Club, Camp Read a Lot. We know the importance of celebrating as a way to connect and feel part of a community. We take celebrating very seriously. It's woven into our teaching every day as students and teachers celebrate the hard work that goes into their daily learning. As we look ahead to the remainder of the year, we want to highlight four areas. We will continue our work with growth mindset to dig deeper into the work of creating a growth mindset culture at Sibley. We rely on the foundational work of Carol Dweck. As teachers continue to explore their own growth mindset, we now turn our attention to how we can create growth mindset in our students. We hope to teach children that each of them has the ability to grow their brains and connect more neurons with each new learning. We want them to know that we never quit learning, and that challenges help us learn and grow. Mistakes make us stronger, and we should celebrate the learning that comes from challenging yourself and perhaps from making a few mistakes.
And through an emphasis on instructional coaching this year, we've observed and offered feedback to many Sibley teachers already and look forward to continuing to do so. Last year, the coaches read a book by Jim Knight called Instructional Coaching. We particularly liked it because it was a partnership approach to improving instruction. We like to work alongside teachers wherever they're at. Teachers are always looking to improve their practice, and sometimes that can be overwhelming. So helping out with this is quite a joy for both of us. Often, these pure observations lead to continued conversations that stretch and empower teachers to move forward, meeting the needs of students at a higher level or maybe a little more efficiently.
I already spoke a little bit about our additional reading services. But, you know, Sibley is not a Title I building, nor we probably ever will be. So this has really filled a need for us. So we have Kathy Bennett and Inger Hansen, who are sharing the new ADSS position, who work with our most struggling readers. And then our three Minnesota Reading Core members, Peter McGory, David Entenman, and Michael Garletts, just came on as a halftime. So two and a half-time tutors that devote their time to working one-on-one with students in grades K through three that need an extra boost in their early literacy skills.
And the fourth area is problem-solving processes for number stories. And really, in the past few years, we have solidified our strategies and expectations around fact fluency. And we're really excited to put these skills into action with our problem solving. We know that each grade level right now has resources that are great appropriate that they can use to attack word problems. And we also have a common process so that we're creating some clarity and common language around this for our students as they address the different number stories. Do you have any questions or comments?
Thank you. Board members, questions or comments? Anne?
I thought your presentation was just great. And all the details you put in, and the twirls and everything. It was a really nice presentation that kept us going and keeping all the students busy.
Thank you. A lot of credit goes to Tanya and Becky for putting this together. They have just done a tremendous job. A couple of years ago, basically through the reins of the staff development they're with, and they grabbed those reins and they ran with it. So they have done a tremendous job. And like they said, you know, they surveyed the staff last year to get those five areas of focus. And it was a cool process how we landed where we did. But there are some good things that we're working on at Sibley.
Wonderful. So, board members, any other questions? I had, well, a question and a comment. My first question is, how is it going with the fourth and fifth graders having their own iPads?
It's interesting. It's really nice to have. I think from the beginning, we had some glitches with signing in and things like that. We knew that there was going to be an implementation gap, you know, when we started this process. And we're working through those glitches. But as far as having iPads and having those, you know, in the hands of students, that's going really well.
Good, excellent.
I think we're, we're taking away what, what maybe little issues they might have in sixth grade. And students used to ask. Taking away, and they'll notice students who come in that are, are basically well-roamed in the area.
Wonderful. And then I just had two comments. I, I agree. I mean, it's just been so fun every year to have Tanya and Becky here, particularly around the staff development piece and how they're so successfully weaving that with a growth mindset with the students. And it, it's just really, really fun to hear you guys and how you're developing the students and the staff and how that's, that's working well for, for everyone and growing everyone. I just think it's excellent. So again, wonderful report. Thank you. You guys always do such a really great job.
Thank you.
So thank you. So we will move on to the Greg Delano, principal at Middle School, along with, looks like he has a few staff members here as well.
Good evening. This is my second year getting the privilege of doing this. And you learn with every time you get to stand up in front of all of you. The first thing I learned as I was sitting through the World Trust Workforce is when you run home, stay away from your golden retriever. I will remember that. This evening, we kind of have like three parts. The first part that, the first two parts I'm going to cover. The first one is reviewing our goals from last year and how we did. The second one is our goals for this year. And I will kind of do a little caveat before I go into that because it's kind of changed our mindset a little bit. But we trained them up to station already, so our goals are already in place. But I'll give you kind of a snapshot of the direction we're going after this year. But really, the kind of, the meat of the presentation is about some of the champion people that I brought with me and the rest of our staff and some of the great things that they're doing in the classroom to support our students. Especially our students that are really, that bottom 20% or probably bottom 40% of those students that are, we're really looking to support them on the way forward. And I think we have some great things going. So first of all, the review from last year as we go through. And our first goal was, was a math goal. And these are all related to, the academic ones are related to the MCAs. And our goal was to be 12% higher than the state. And our thought process was that even though the test changes from year to year a little bit, we always compare ourselves to the state. We thought that was a pretty realistic thing, so it was a pretty accurate viewpoint. We shot for 12%. We didn't reach it. We were a little under nine. Then in the reading, we, again, we shot for 13%. And we, obviously, we missed that mark as well. Both those two, well, I'll do science. Science, we did reach. We shot for five and we got a little bit over. The math and the reading, after a few sleepless nights from several people that were highly disappointed, myself included, saying, okay, what's going on? I've been in classrooms. I know great things are happening. I know the PLCs. So we kind of dug a little bit deeper. And that's kind of the part that we got some added information, but our goal's moving it forward. We're kind of already well down the way. So moving, we're going to start changing instead of looking at percentages and comparing to the state. We're really going to look at growth. We're going to look at student growth and trying to move that forward. I think it's more attainable for staff instead of this big, kind of elephant in the room trying to move that. It seems to be a little bit more obtainable if you really look at individual students. So that's the direction we're going to be in. We also have a goal with our MTSS, Multi-Tierred System of Supports. And that goal was, when we were trying to discuss it, what we wanted to shoot for is our first year doing MTSS, it really was, I don't know, throw a dart at a dartboard because we really weren't sure how much we were going to be able to move these students. But, so we shot for 75%. And that's only 75% of the students that we were working with, both in math and reading. And our both building goal was 75%. And then this one, in this case, for reading, we were only able to move 37%. And by moving, we're talking one achievement level. So they're going from, most of these students either partially met or did not meet. And we wanted to move them up one of those levels. We weren't working with those students that meets or exceeds, obviously. We were looking at those bottoms. And then also then for math, we were able to move 15.4%. And we're, again, disappointed, but we also sat back and said, well, that's 15.4%. And the 37% that we probably, more than likely, maybe wouldn't have moved. So if it's still a good number, and then moving forward, we could be maybe a little more realistic. We also took another shot at our MTSS. We thought, all right, let's just look at positive growth, 5% positive growth. How much we move? And again, shot in the dark. We shot for 75% of our students. Can we move at least 75% of them, 5% in a positive direction? Where each student grew by 5% or more. And we did, we did do better in this. We did it 75%, but in reading, it was 52%. And in math, it was just about 31% that we were able to move. Then we had our climate goal. And I know that we've presented that we were kind of on a journey of implementing PBIS. And this year is our first year being fully implemented. But one of our goals was to make sure we had 80% of staff buy-in. And staff means support staff, not just teaching staff. It means our cooks, our custodians, our office staff. It means everyone. And so through different surveys that we did, we, we kind of stayed on top of that and made sure we had that 80%. And if we didn't, with the promise I made to the staff, that our PBIS team made to the staff, if we didn't have 80%, we were going to back up. We're going to make sure we did before we move forward. And we were able to just keep flipping along. And there's two graphs. This one has to do with a set evaluation. This is an outside evaluator that comes in. That's part of the PBIS program. They come in, they talk to students, they talk to staff, they walk around our building, and they look at, they interview myself, along with, I think they may have talked to Rachel Hudson as well. And they just got information about what we've already done, what we had in place. Do students know what PBIS is? So they get to talk to students and staff. And again, without being fully implemented last year, we did very well, as you can see by this graph. Expectations taught and reward system in place, that's lower, but that was to be expected because the teaching expectations come to full implementation, which we are currently now doing. If that came back this year, that would be, I'm confident at 100%. And same with the reward system, we're dabbling in it, but now we have more of a reward system in place. The second piece was, this was our PBIS team. And we also had a checklist, and we kind of kept ourselves accountable as we went through. Now, this graph's interesting in the sense that as you go from left to right in each category, it's kind of checkpoints along the way throughout the years of us doing it. And you can kind of see how we progressed. You know, as we kind of learned the process, we went to our training, we implemented a few things, made some mistakes, backed up. You can see how we kept going. But on the far right, in nearly every category, we are at 100% or near 100%. So we really, our team is proud and very excited, and we're ready to roll into this year. Now, for our this year's plan, our site improvement plan that we have in our goals. And as I kind of mentioned, these goals were in place. And they started off with our building site improvement team, which includes parents and staff members and myself. And we kind of look at data and we kind of talk around of what we want our goals to be. Moving forward beyond this, as I mentioned, these are still based off of MCAs. The climate goals are slightly different. But beyond, after this year, there will be more talking about individual student growth. Side note, this picture you see here is our NMS Pride ticket. We'll be rolling that out soon to students. And this is one of our reward programs that we do for students. So it's something, we're actually starting it where we're going to hide a ticket. And students have to find it to get them used to seeing what it is and getting excited about it. And we'll roll the whole thing out. That's coming up soon. But our student achievement goals for this current year is that middle school students will score 50% higher than the state average on this year's MCA Math and Reading Test, and then 8% higher on the MCA Science Test. I'm a highly competitive person, and so even though we maybe weren't realistic, there's some things that we are changing in how we do our testing, as well as some adjustments through our PLCs that I'm, I want to give it another shot. So I want to keep that bar up there instead of lowering it and see if we can come a whole lot closer. The science test, we, we actually met. So let's raise the bar again and see what we can do. And as, in a couple of slides here, you'll see that there's some things that the science folks are doing to maybe help with that as well. Another student achievement goal, again with the MTSS. You can see a little more realistic. We're talking about 50% to the 75% that we would like to increase their achievement level. And we will keep the 75%, but instead of that 75% being 5% growth, it's just positive growth. So we're seeing we can hit that 75% of those students moving positively. A little caveat to this, it's a different group of students. Now, you've kind of heard about AdSIS a little bit. We have AdSIS requirements. So it is a different clientele that our MTSS coaches are working with than we did last year. They are the bottom 20% this year. Last year, we had some more of those partially meets. For the most part, most of our students are students that do not meet that we're working with. But we're still excited. The students actually are very excited because they're seeing success as well. So we still think that's realistic. How will we get there? Obviously, continue to work with our PLCs. I go through their, the PLCs are rolling. They're doing some great things, looking at data, looking at that curriculum. A lot of good conversations between grade levels for a lot of them. So that needs to continue and will continue. Wednesday Reads Program, that actually starts Wednesday this week. And that is an interesting thing that actually came out of our Language Arts PLC from last year. It's a program that they kind of threw out an idea of, can we get all middle school to read, even if it's just for 10 minutes once a week? And they presented this to me and they said, you know, students need to read for two and a half hours a day just to maintain their current reading level. And that kind of took me back. I'm a math person, so I didn't, I'd not have known that. So that really, I said, you know, let's talk this through and see if we can make this happen. And we're taking advantage of Wednesdays in the sense that our fifth hour, because we have an extra lunch period, is longer. And fourth period's longer on Wednesday than the other periods. So we're taking that 10 minutes out of that time. So it ultimately doesn't really take class time away. All it does is bring those hours down to the same amount of time as hours one, two, three, six, and seven, which is a good selling point. People don't lose curricular time. As well as, I think it's really about building a culture. 10 minutes is, you can say, oh, it's only 10 minutes. But it's really building a culture of reading. And that's really what we want to do. So students finish assignments, the first reaction is, I'm going to grab a book. I'm going to use a book. And they're going to carry a book with them or have it on their iPads they can read. So that's really what we're looking for. And that starts, like I said, this week. We have everyone from guidance counselors going in the classrooms, our office staff. They're going to split up, and one person's going to cover the office. And the other two are going to go out in costumes as well. Mr. O'Keefe and myself will be out there. So it would really be a visual that, no, we're all valuing reading, and we think it's important. So that's, again, starting this week. The seventh and eighth grade science, they are collaborating, and they are doing assessments. Tanya McDonough, that's here, actually worked on most, if not all, those assessments, looking at standards and looking at those core areas that could show up in the science test. And they're making sure, they're kind of giving students a snapshot and doing it by giving them little assessments along the way as a goal. And we really think that's going to benefit that, the students, and really do that extra boost. And then again, the MTSS classes, the World Trust Workforce kind of alluded to this. We do have some classes for MTSS, one for each grade, one in reading and math. We also have Rachel Hudson that works with behavior as well under that guideline. Well, and then this slide. And this is the group that you're going to hear a little bit more about here in about a minute or two. But we made an adjustment to the Read 180 curriculum where Deb Townford was seeing, talking, again, collaborating with colleagues, that there seems to be, through the Read 180 program, they need to really get phonics more than they were. So she's added that piece into Read 180. Continue the building of the Geoscience and Geography Plus programs. I spoke about that last year, and they are growing. They're doing some phenomenal things. They went to Bridgewater the other day, and those students got to teach Bridgewater kids about science. They've had speakers come in, and you'll hear a little bit more about that here in a moment. And then supporting academically through our WILL program. Our WILL program helps seventh and eighth grade students who just basically need a little extra TLC, a little extra support from an adult to keep them organized, help stay on top of them. And they also see good success. So we're continuing to do that. And then the social emotional needs of our students, which is done in our Student Support Office through our social worker, guidance counselors, and a school psychologist, as well as Mr. O'Keefe as a assistant principal myself. We make up that team. That's an area that I think we can't overlook. I mean, students have, they come to us with baggage, and they come to us where thinking about school is probably not their top priority. And we have to make it a safe place for them to come and really set them up so that they're able to be successful in the classroom. And that's what they do. Our climate goal, our plan is that we will increase the number of students by 10% who feel the middle school promotes positive and respectful behavior, as well as we will increase the number of students who feel at least one adult, that they have one adult that they can talk to at school by 10%. We'll very, this month, actually, we'll give our first survey along those lines. Students will take that, and then we'll give it two more times throughout the year and kind of measure where we're at. We really think of the PBIS and some of the other things that we're doing. This is more than a reasonable goal for us. And this is just kind of reiterates, a student support team that I mentioned. They're doing things with, both with small group works and working with individual families, as well as sponsoring events, whether it be assemblies, dances, web events. So it's just things to get students connected to school. And again, we have fully implemented PBIS, and that will continue to grow as we go. Not quite yet, but we are just about there. The people, in fact, I mean, they'll introduce themselves. We talked about maybe having me introduce them. But I think we'll let the, we're going to let the video play. And again, this is what, the fun part. This is what's really going on in the classroom that we're really excited about. And we felt it was important that, the statistics are all great, and they're necessary for, to reporting back to all of you. But this is something that I don't think you get to hear very often and or see. This will give you a really good look at just a few of the interventions that we're doing for our students.
Hello, I'm Deb Townford. The Read 180 program has been here for six years now at middle school. We usually have them start with a placement test when they come into the program, which gives them the opportunity to work individually on a computer program. And they can also use their, that same Lexile score that they get from this test that they take will also give them the opportunity to choose books from our library here. And so everything is individualized for the students. When they first come into the classroom, we do this large group lesson. And at first, we were doing this out of the Read 180 workbook. But now we have transitioned to a different program that helps them with their phonics skills, breaking down big words, letting them identify prefixes and suffixes, and giving them some new tools that they hadn't had here in the past. They're here for a two-hour block, so they start with that first. And then they break into smaller groups, and they'll go to the computers and have like three to four different types of activities that they work on. It's very engaging. The kids can see their progress as they're working on the computers. I just really value the program because it gives them hope and confidence in what they're doing as readers. We're giving them new tools in their toolbox of reading. And so I just really enjoy working with the program.
Hi, I'm Judith McDonough. I teach the Geoscience Plus here, program here at the middle school. Daryl Sawyer started this program in the fall of 2012 as a way to help students with organization, goal-setting, advocacy, and academic, academic support. In the fall of 2014, a science component was added with the same goals. Our interventions include seminar, which is a weekly opportunity for students to ask questions from an academic area and get questions from an academic area and get help in a tutorial setting. Also, we include weekly binder checks, speakers on careers, perseverance, and about preparing for the future. Students have a study hall with me between geoscience and geography as another intervention. Overall, I see that students are more engaged in the science component, they like science more, they're doing more actual science, and they're not getting lost in the shuffle.
I'm Dan Myers, I'm at MTSS Middle School, that teacher. For years, we've wanted extra help for students who are below grade level in math, and we finally have that now at MTSS classes. We've got a small class size, at least fifteen students in each class, and they're identified as being below the twenty percentile in math. So those kids have their regular math class and then they come to my room every other day for extra help in math. And we start each day with a mini lesson or activity based on what they need, so I meet with the grade level teachers and find out, seventh graders work on fractions, I'll have a fractions activity that we can do, they work in small groups on those activities or by themselves. After that, they take an assessment in Compass, and so those results get sent to me instantly, and I can find out which kids need more support for that topic. I can spend the rest of the class period going around and doing interventions with those students. Usually it's two or three or four students that need extra help with that, and then have them do a retake to find out and make sure that they're actually learning what they need to learn. The other students who pass that little quiz work in their Compass folders, and those are based on their math scores, and they identify the gaps that those students have, and then by working in their Compass folders, they'll hopefully get caught at the grade level. I'm excited to see the results, and it's going to be really good, and hopefully that'll set these kids up for success in their future math classes.
Hello, I'm Rose Turnicly, I am the MTSS teacher here at the middle school. The majority of our time in our classroom is spent on two items at this time. One is Great Leaps. Great Leaps is a tool that will work on phonics. I discovered that many of the students lack phonics skills, and that is a key component to help them improve their reading skills. The second part that we work on is the Compass Learning, and it comes through the iPad. It's all individually based, takes a look at their math scores and actually plugs them right into a track where they need to have the most improvement. So when we retake the math test again in the spring, and even in the winter, we'll probably do it in January, we hope to see a lot of growth. The thing that I like best about being an MTSS teacher is that I get to be with a small number of students and I get to give them personal attention. I find that all of my students are happy to be here and they appreciate everything that I can do to help them be a better reader and to be a better student. It's really fun to be honest with kids and to say, here's an area that you need help and I've got some ideas on how to help you. So I'm really looking forward to see what our results are at the end of the year.
I'm Dr. Sean, teacher on the WILL program here at the middle school. WILL is that the students come in, set a goal, I will, and usually has to do with homework, test scores. They develop their own goal, and of course, they track that on a computer program by themselves and keep track of it throughout the year and give them watch their success. Here, we deal with organizational skills, which is the main problem these young students have, is how to start certain assignments, when to start an assignment, keeping their notes in order, sometimes the binders, the lockers are a mess. Organization is one of the main things that we have to deal with here. As far as the grades, we've been very successful in raising the grades of these students, and they feel very proud, and some, we have quite a few, they have to be honored, which they've never done before, and they take such pride, self-esteem is a problem here, and it really boosts their esteem when they find out they get good grades, hey, I can do this, man, I get good grades, and it's really exciting.
I am Jetty Streetwood, counselor at the middle school. Research shows that students who feel connected, attend school more regularly, and have less daily rates in classes. So our goal, one of our building goals, is to improve school connectedness and improve climate. So part of the student support team goal is to try to build relationships with students. We try to get students to feel successful and to feel confident, so we try to connect students with tutors, offer them academic support. A lot of our students are struggling with stressors outside of school day, they have family stress, they have mental health struggles, so informing the teachers and working as a team to support the whole student.
Hi, I'm Heather Stannine, I'm the school social here at the middle school. I do, there's large groups, and a lot of those are done in the little program, do the students individually, and it's usually for short-term stuff, just to help them build some skills or get support and help students feel successful and be able to be functional in the classroom. One of the other things that we do here in the student support office is work with parents to support them and staff, and sometimes we do this, we help them, get students connected to mentoring programs, either at your school, here at the middle school, or at a different college.
I'm school counselor here at the middle school, and I'm just talking a little bit about transitions, we work with a lot of students in transitioning between fifth grade and sixth grade. There's a program called Web where we connect, it's our orientation program where all of the students come, we connect them with eighth grade leaders, so we have a leadership program where our eighth grade students are leading, our sixth grader was not just for orientation, but throughout the whole year, they connect with a group, they help them with homework, they show them different things about school and how to be successful in middle school, so that's a big part of our sixth grade and eighth grade programs.
Hi, I'm Rachel Hudson, I'm the school psychologist at Northfield Middle School. This is our third year with PBIS, and our biggest change this year with PBIS is that we're adding in the character education. So we have videos that play every other Monday, some are student-made, our web leaders have been making videos too to address some student concerns. Types of videos that they create are for friendship skills, technology use, I think at the middle school, we've become a lot more systematic with our intervention, both social emotional interventions as well as our academic intervention with the addition of the math and reading MTSS classes. We're just really looking forward to seeing where this way goes and hopefully we'll have to do it down the cherry next year.
I should give credit where it's due. Rachel Hudson is our award-winning Hollywood producer of our videos. And the gentleman at the end wearing the Raider outfit, he's become famous at the middle school, he is the star of all of our PBIS films, he's our NMS Raider, and he goes through and shows our students what expectations, basically, he's our PBIS guy, he's our go-to guy for, that goes through different videos, and kids actually, they get a kick out of it and he hams it up, because he's good at that. At this time, I'm going to have the team of people that did come with me just introduce themselves, all of them were on the videos, they may just give a real short summary or something, they said, which I talked about in the video, I said, if you highlight one thing on the video, so we'll kind of keep it short, but I thought it was important for you to at least give them a speak.
And then they can answer the questions.
That's right.
Perfect.
Hello, I'm Rachel Hudson, I'm the school psychologist at the middle school, with also the additional time for MTSS, so I use that time to consult with the reading and math classes that we have for MTSS, as well as I help with the data for the WILL program and the goal setting, meeting one-on-one with those students every week, and then also our, our office discipline referral data and our minor report data, so that kind of all ties under PBIS. But overall, in the last few years that I've been here, I just think at the school, we've just made such great progress and we're always getting better every year, so.
Rose Turnicly, and I am, first time for me teaching in the MTSS program with our reading students. Again, just to reiterate, these are the lowest twenty percent of our readers at the middle school, and I see sixth graders in a group by themselves, seventh graders and eighth graders, and the students that I see, I see every other day. And in addition to the academic piece, it's, it's the attendance piece, it's coming to school, it's talking about how they're doing in their other classes, and just trying to have them feel connected to somebody at school.
Hello, I'm Deb Tomford, and I work with the Read 180 program. My passion has always been to help the underachievers, and reading is very challenging for every student that I work with. It's just amazing to me to see them working for two hours in my classroom on something that's hard for them, and I just am grateful for your support. Thanks.
I'm Tammy McDonough, and I'm one half of the PLUS program. Daryl Sawyer teaches the geography portion, and the kids that are in our program are selected by recommendations from their seventh grade teacher. And this year, we've added a study hall between our two classes, which has been really beneficial for the students. The best part of the PLUS program to me is the seminars on Thursdays, and I welcome any of you to come any Thursday, either second or fourth hour, to view that process, because it's quite remarkable.
I should also mention someone on the video, Michelle Garrettner, we do have another Read 180 instructor, but strictly for special education students, the students Deb Tomford works with, our students, they can be in special, but they can't have a reading goal. So if they have a reading goal, they go to Michelle, if they don't, then they go to Deb. But she's doing this, the same program that Deb does, so I should give her credit as well for doing the interventions. So that is the end, we are here to answer any questions you may have.
Board members, questions or comments?
So I have a comment. So it really struck me of hearing the excellent presentation, and I appreciated all the voices, and then hearing Sibley's before, is how Hope and Mary were saying how they struggled with being told sort of what the measures have to be and trying to take this holistic perspective, I think is what you said, Hope. And I was really struck by both of these reports and how you really had this sort of grounds-up from your staff as to what mattered, and took this sort of comprehensive holistic perspective on both your reports, and I think really kudos to both schools for doing that, because I can see how MDE is really kind of pushing the particular measures and particular standards, and I like how you're taking this building perspective and really taking, you know, we hear these are site improvement plans, but I, I heard from both of you how it was something that came out of your building, and I loved the sort of holistic perspective of the social emotional, the climate pieces, and the academic pieces. I really appreciated that.
Thank you.
Board members, other questions or comments?
I just wanted to echo what Ellen said, because, you know, again, the theme running through both your presentations is how you're continually challenging yourself, challenging yourself to be better at every, you know, to look at every approach for student learning, so you never rest on your laurels, and I think Rachel said it best when you said you were only getting better every year, so I think that really is remarkable. And I wanted to just point out to our, congratulate middle school on PBIS implementation. You guys just knocked that one right out of the park. I mean, in three years to get where you guys are is just really, really commendable and really impressive. And secondly, I think we'd be remiss in not thanking the site improvement teams that have the effort of pulling together the report in addition to those that were here tonight. I know there's another, there's a whole other set of team members that serve in the site improvement plan process, so we wanted to be sure to thank them for what they have done to pull all of this together, so, thank you. It's been a very long day for all of you, so we appreciate you being here. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so with our two improvements, heightened school improvement plan completed, then we will move on to items for individual action, and as we had mentioned initially, in the World's Best Workforce two thousand and fourteen, fifteen annual report, we will move now to approve that report. The motion is to approve the two thousand and fourteen, fifteen World's Best Workforce Annual Report as presented. Moved by Noel, second? Second by Jeff. Any discussion or questions? Okay?
I could just share with you again, the, and appreciate the comments that board members have made. I think you see the effort that we're trying to do to make the, make the World's Best Workforce piece work on a district level, in a focus that is, that is from the Department of Thinking top-down. Everything comes from the district and is driven down. You saw two presentations tonight where everything is pushed up, and I guess in the end, we'll probably find out how that plays, but my sense is we're going to get much more impact in terms of things that staff and building administrators together say, these are the things we want to get done, and these are the ways we're going to get it done. And I, again, really appreciate both Scott and Greg in terms of the, they're allowing the staff members in each building to really kind of attack the issue and think about, what do we got to do differently? And again, hopefully with the ATSS dollars and, and MTSS dollars that we've been able to kind of put into buildings, allowing people to really focus in on supporting what kids need. At the same time, World's Best Workforce is not going away, and so we're going to really focus on doing the pieces we need to do there. But I think you also heard from the folks that there are a lot more variety of assessments available beyond the very minimal, very focused set of assessments that the state wants us all to be measured by. Absolutely understand when the commissioner is sitting down trying to do three or four hundred of these World's Best Workforce plans, that you got to really make it a very narrow spice, but that really, in my mind, does not reach the breadth and depth and quality of the various programs that we're running. And so again, it's, it's how do we keep that balance of making sure we meet what the State Department and the legislature desires to do, but we don't ever lose track of what we're doing, I think, in terms of our school improvement plans? Thank you.
Excellent, okay, we have a motion, but the second, any other questions or comments? Okay, we'll move on. So all those in favor of approving the, let's see, where am I? Motion to all the World's Best Workforce, excuse me, the two thousand and fourteen, fifteen World's Best Workforce Annual Report as presented, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay. So we will move on to the second item for individual action, which is the American Education Week Proclamation. Mike Richardson?
Okay, and again, as we move into November now, we are at the point in time when we celebrate American Education Week, and the real focus there is for us to show our appreciation for all the work of all of our educators and all of the staff that work with students every day. To do that, we really have two things that we do locally. One of those is a retired educator's appreciation luncheon, the other is the staff appreciation breakfast. And I say with, with a lot of humility, for many years now, the, the work that really puts that together comes from community services, and First Hannah and now Erin have really taken on the mantle of figuring out exactly how to make that work well. And so I think we have some really positive opportunities to support our staff, really positive opportunities to support our retirees in terms of the process. So we would obviously encourage the approval of the American Education Week proclamation, which, Madam Chair, you have available to share.
Yes, I am happy to read the American Education Week proclamation. Whereas public schools are the backbone of our democracy, providing young people with the tools they need to maintain our nation's precious values of freedom, civility, and equality, and whereas by equipping young Americans with both practical skills and broader intellectual abilities, schools give them hope for and access to a productive future, and whereas education employees, be they custodians or teachers, bus drivers or librarians, work tirelessly to serve our children and communities with care and professionalism, and whereas schools are community linchpins, bringing together adults and children, educators and volunteers, business leaders... volunteers, business leaders, and elected officials in the common enterprise. Now therefore, the Northfield Public Schools Board of Education does hereby proclaim November 16 through the 20th, 2015, as the 94th Annual Observation of American Education Week. So it asks for a motion to approve the American Education Week proclamation as presented. Moved by Ellen. Second?
Second.
Second by Ann.
Second.
Second by Rob. Okay. Any questions or discussion? Okay. All those in favor of approving the proclamation, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, we will now move on to approval of the consent grouping. As a reminder, there were a number of personnel items in the table file. Oh, yeah, this is the consent grouping. Is there anything anyone would like to pull from the consent grouping? Okay, is there a motion to approve the consent grouping? Moved by Ann. Second?
Second.
Second by Rob. Okay. Any discussion or questions? Okay. All those in favor of approving the consent grouping, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Move on to items for information, first being, there's in the packet, the Enrollment Options Report. Dr. Richardson?
Okay. Again, I think what you'll see with the Enrollment Options Report is pretty much a continuation, I think, of what we've seen over the last several years in terms of the populations of students either coming to our district or leaving our district. When you look at students that are leaving our district, go to another public school outside of our district, we've seen basically that number this year has dropped from 187 last year to 179. At the same time, the number of students that we have coming into our district is very much stable. We're at 281 students as compared to 282 students last year. And again, you can see that in terms of student population coming in, that Faribault and New Preay continue to be the districts that are sending more students to us than before. At the same time, probably the district that is gathering some additional students from us at this point is Randolph. But again, overall, numbers have been very, very stable in terms of in and out, in terms of the public school to public school. As far as the non-public schools, you see a slight reduction there in terms of numbers. But again, insignificantly different between 163 and 158. You will actually see the number of families increase, but the number of students who are being homeschooled is actually very stable at 120 as compared to 121. And the number of students going to charter schools is down slightly, from 288 down to 272. And again, as always, the two that we contribute the most to would be the Arcadia Charter School and Prairie Creek Charter School, both of which are located within the Northfield boundaries and are both authorized by us as schools. The other one that you see a slight increase is the MPCS Connections Academy, which again is a K-12 online program. So really, not any real significant change from last year. Again, the positive is that we continue to draw more public school students from other districts than are leaving us, and our other numbers are very, very stable right now.
Board members, any questions on this report?
Okay. I always appreciate this report being pulled, because oftentimes, our community members will ask us specifically these numbers. Every year, we have them. Fortunately, they don't dramatically change, so you can kind of typically remember them, but it's always good to have this update.
And it is really interesting when you look at all the different places that kids come from and all the different places that kids go to. When you think about students going to Duluth, you're sitting there, hmm, how is that possible? Obviously, Maple River, you know, down the road a ways, Honemia. So while there are some schools that are close to us, others, like St. Cloud, are quite a ways down the road. So again, it's, but it is the frame again of how open enrollment has impacted Minnesota schools for the last two decades.
Okay, so we'll stay on that topic. And the second report is the enrollment report for November of 2015.
And what can I say? Same-o, same-o. Again, we're sitting just south of 4,000 students at this point in time. And again, that continues to be about a 50-student increase from where we've been in the last few years. So I think that's a very, is a good sign for us. And again, that does not mean that Hazel does not know what she's doing. It just is taking a little while for that to happen. Again, the great thing, however, as we've kind of shared before, is that our class sizes for our primary students are really, continue to be very appropriate in having really no more than about 23 students, and in some cases, it's usually 16 or 17 students at the kindergarten level. And even in the largest classes we have, which again, will be fourth and fifth grade, we're looking at no more than three sections in each building being more than 27. So again, the majority of our class sizes, even understanding and remembering that when we made those significant cuts a decade ago, and really had some significant impact, that we've been able to keep those numbers from getting larger. And in many cases, the numbers at the primary level are coming down. And we've been able to maintain the staffing that we have, so those numbers stay very, true to form from year to year.
Okay. Any questions on that? Okay, so last item for information, just a reminder that at our next board meeting, Monday, November 23rd, prior to that meeting at 6:00 PM, is the reception for the National Merit Scholars, which will be held in the high school cafeteria. Feature meetings, Monday, November 23rd, and we're already talking about December, Monday, December 14th, both at 7:00 PM in the high school media center. With that, I ask for a motion that we adjourn. Moved by Jeff. Second? Second by Margaret. Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We are adjourned.